I really do.
They're looking, they have this up against a long bar and I stopped, grabbed the shovel. And then back the shovel got back in, drove along.
Used to be there, used to be down at the old powwow.
And then went in and the chef goes, "So you stopped and went wah wah wah." And I didn't say a word and he goes, "What did you say?" Laura came in all day and goes, "Dad stopped, car and deer." Got out.
Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started here. It is January thirteenth at 7:00 PM. I'll call this board meeting to order with six board members present. One is absent. I would like to go ahead and welcome our newest board member, Melidia Payne. Welcome. And if you'd please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, unadored, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we are going to adjourn Sinny Dai in order to elect a board president. All in favor of this action? Oh, do we have a motion? Motion first, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes six oh.
Alright, so that means that I get to preside over the board meeting for just a little bit. At this point in time, we would entertain any motion for president, Board of Education, or discussion if there needs to be.
Dr. Cobb's. I make a motion that we elect Julie Dandrio to board president for 2020.
Second to that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six zero. At this point in time, we'll adjourn Sinny Dai again and turn it back over to newly re-elected board president, Julie Dandrio.
Do we have to move again? Make a motion that we adjourn as directed.
As directed.
I hate that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Now we'll turn it over.
Now we'll turn it over.
There's a reason why I'm not the president.
Okay, no, that's okay. This is an unusual meeting, for sure. Alright, we are back in regular session and the next order of business is to elect a board vice president.
Madam President, I would make a motion that we elect Linda Alderman as vice president of the board for 2020.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes six oh as well. We are on to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
No, let's go home.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes six oh. We are on to consent agenda. Dr. Cobb's, is there anything on here?
The only thing that I just want to draw attention to is that Walmart donated $2,500 and will utilize this to help with some of the technology at OHS as we continue to evolve. There are attendance processes there, especially with the different scheduling that they're looking at. But did want to say thank you to Walmart for their continued support of USD 290 in all of our schools.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes six oh. We do not have any comments from the public this evening. We move on to reports and presentations. We have Greg Varenberg from Raymond James who's going to present to us on the refinance options of the USD 290 bonds. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Again, Greg Varenberg with Raymond James. I believe you have a bound book and also some information that was included in the board docs packet related to our firm. I thought I'd start with the presentation to the Board of Education. And I know that you're looking at some options in terms of bond refinancing and I wanted to share some information with you regarding my background with the school district, my experience in Kansas, working with schools on their bond issues and bond refinancing opportunities. But one of the first pages that you come to in the presentation really stopped and thought, put myself in your position, and what are some of the things that I would think about or want to know related to selecting a firm to help with the bond refinancing? Some of the things that I think are important, you know, does the individual have experience with the district? Does the individual have experience with bond issues in Kansas, similar refinancings? Does the individual have the resources at that firm to properly complete the bond issue? And, you know, will the banker work with the administration of the district and not only just to evaluate a refinancing, but look at the bigger picture and see what opportunities there are for mill levy management and the overall goals of the district, rather than just come in and capture a savings and then move on? And for some of you that don't know, on page four, I've worked with the district for about eighteen years now and I've been in this business for about thirty years. And one of the most rewarding things for me is when I have a school district or a city or county that I'm able to work with for a long period of time. And I'm very proud to say I've worked with the district for eighteen years now and it's hard to believe how quickly those years have passed. But I think, while some of you may not be familiar with me, I know that certain members of the administration and maybe even some of the board members do recognize me from the bond election and then also from my track record in terms of mill levy projections, capturing savings on prior refinancings and some of those previous opportunities. So hopefully, as you think about who you want to work with moving forward, you'll remember that I was the one working with the district for the past eighteen years. I was previously at Piper Jaffray. About a year ago, after being at Piper for twenty years, chose to step away and take on a new challenge and opened up the office for Raymond James. So that's what led to the transition. When you look at page six, you know, again, I had mentioned that I've been working on bond issues in Kansas for nearly thirty years now and during that time have completed about eleven hundred bond issues. And that's, when I added that up, it was really surprising to me and I thought of all of the miles, I wish I'd have kept a log of that and how many times I've sat in a board meeting or city council meeting. But the majority of my focus has been on bond issues in Kansas and you can see on page six, a lot of those school districts that I've worked with. But I did want to highlight a few of the school districts where I've had a similar relationship, long-term clients. Spring Hill nearby, worked with them for sixteen years, fourteen bond issues. And I'm currently working with them on a very similar bond refinancing as, to the opportunity that's available to the Ottawa School District. Topeka School District, I've worked with Topeka for twenty-two years and we just sold last week a large refunding bond issue. It totaled one hundred and five million and locked in a savings of about 20.4 million on their issue, is a very high level of savings. And it used an approach very similar to the approach that I think would be beneficial for the district. We lowered the interest rate from 3.81% to 2.9% and we were able to look at the mill levy of the district and actually be in a position, as a result of that refinancing, to lower the mill levy in the bond and interest fund. Salina is also another school district I've worked with for quite some time. We closed a bond issue in the fall for Salina. That issue had about five million in savings for the district. And I've worked with Salina for twenty-one years and completed eleven bond issues during that timeframe. Pittsburgh is also a very similar situation. Worked with them for nineteen years. They don't have a refunding opportunity right now. Part of that is just a function of the interest rates that we were able to lock in on their outstanding bonds. But on the following page, Bueller School District, I've worked with them for quite a while as well. And also last week, we sold a $30 million refunding bond issue for Bueller School District. They lowered their interest rate from four percent to 2.89% and locked in a savings of a little over $2 million on that issue. So again, that's very similar. It's an approach that we think would be beneficial to the Ottawa School District. And I wanted to show you that we've got some long-term relationships where we're able to go in and capture a savings in a very similar manner to the opportunity that's available to you as well. I promised to keep this brief, so I'm going to flip through a couple of pages. The next page I wanted to highlight was page thirteen. And I made the comment, starting the discussion about, you work with the individual and that individual is really the person that gives you the advice and guides you through the process. But it's equally as important to make sure that behind that individual, that firm has resources and experiences to execute properly when you're completing a bond issue. And very proud to say that Raymond James is one of the top underwriters of bond issues for K-12, school bond issues in the country. Last year, we ranked number three nationally by the number of bond issues and then number five nationally by the par amount of bond issues. So while it's a new firm for me, school bond issues are nothing new for our firm and we do have a lot of resources focused on helping schools, school districts with their bond issues. Page eighteen, Raymond James is, we have a lot of offices throughout the country. We're actually a very large firm. I came from a firm that had about a thousand employees. Raymond James has about 18,000. And we already have a number of offices in Kansas that work with individual investors. In fact, I think we're one of the largest firms in Kansas that provides public finance services. When you look at number of offices and number of employees, we have twenty-five offices throughout the state with seventy-seven employees. Those individuals are primarily working with investors, primarily retail investors or individual investors on managing their investment portfolio. And those individual, the offices that we have throughout Kansas would be involved in selling bonds if you had a public offering and would be able to offer it to in-state investors. But then skipping ahead a few more pages to twenty-two. You had mentioned that we're very active in K-12 school bond issues, but we're also one of the largest firms nationally. And when you look at the bond underwriters in Kansas that work with cities, counties, and school districts, we're the only one that is active in working with issuers in Kansas that has ranked in the top ten each of the last three years. You know, some of the firms that we compete against are very active, but I think you can see that we're consistently one of the larger firms in the country in terms of handling bond issues. And hopefully, that gives you some comfort that I have a firm that knows what they're doing and has the resources behind me to help you properly put together your bond issue. So then, and I promised to keep this short, if you don't mind switching to page twenty-eight, I wanted to change the discussion a little bit to walk you through an example of how we approach a refinancing and how we take a step back and look at the bigger picture. And I want to caution that none of these are recommendations because I think the first step in working on any bond refinancing is to sit down with the administration of the district, look at various scenarios, understand what the overall goals of the district are in terms of mill levy management and what you're trying to accomplish on the bond issue. And if there's an opportunity to lower the bond and interest fund or potentially look at LOB or capital outlay, and we've actually had that situation come up on a number of school bond issues here in the last couple of years, where we're able to lower bond and interest fund, you don't lose any state aid because it's based upon your debt service payments, not where the mill levy is set. But if you can leverage additional state operating dollars in the LOB fund or the capital outlay fund, that can be a very valuable outcome for the district. And if that can all be done without raising taxes for the taxpayers, then that's also a pretty powerful message that you can convey to the taxpayers. When I look at page twenty-eight, one of the things that really stands out for me and is personally, I take the mill levy projections that we used during the bond election campaign very seriously. And when we worked with you on your most recent bond election, I'm very happy to look back now and see the mill levy is right in line with what was shared with voters. And you didn't end up in a situation where you told voters it was going to be one cost and it actually ended up being something higher. And I take those projections very seriously. We try to be accurate, but on the conservative side of accurate, so that if you are in a situation where the mill levy is different, it can be slightly lower than what was told to voters. So we look at your mill levy history, but then as we're thinking about what the future mill levy might look like on page twenty-nine, we also look at the assessed valuation history and the state aid percentages. And one of the biggest challenges that school districts have faced in the last decade is that we were coming off of a financial crisis in 2008, 2009, and we saw assessed valuation, there was a lot of pressure statewide on assessed valuation. And so for any school district that had a bond election during that timeframe, it was difficult to say, you know, if you've had flat growth or even a few years where it was negative, what growth rate do we use moving forward? And what's really nice in your situation is that, you know, since the bond election and especially, you know, the last three or four years, you've had very solid assessed valuation growth. You've averaged 4.62% the last three years, 3.33% the last five years. The other thing that's very much a positive is that when you look at the state aid percentages, your pre-2015 percentage has gone from 42% to 51%. And that's really the best of both worlds is where you have increasing assessed valuation and growing state aid percentage. That takes a lot of pressure off of the mill levy and the bond and interest fund. So then we ran, you know, looking at those assumptions, you know, we ran a mill levy analysis on the outstanding indebtedness of the district. And this is just, again, this is something that we're not projecting or saying this is where you should set the mill levy, but just, I wanted to give you an example of the exercise we go through to understand the mill levy. And one of the first things we saw is that you do have some pressure that is coming off of that mill levy in the bond and interest fund, which gives you some flexibility to think about other opportunities in the district. This scenario here does not take into account the impact of any potential savings on a refinancing. So if you're able to capture a savings, lower your bond payment, that just further reduces the pressure in that bond and interest fund and allows you to consider possibly even a lower mill levy than what we're showing here. But with that said, then I wanted to move on into the opportunity at hand for the district. Page thirty-two. Here, we're showing two different options. One, and it really depends upon the years in which you would take the savings on the refinancing. And again, I would use the same disclaimer as I had before. This is something that we would, before we have a recommendation, we'd want to sit down with the administrative staff and think this through. But just to illustrate the opportunity that's available to you, you have the ability to go in and refinance a portion of an outstanding bond issue. And there's about 31,635,000 of bonds that are outstanding and it's just in the years 2032 through 2040. All of the other years either don't produce enough savings or produce a negative savings to where we would not recommend that you refinance those. So we would go in and carve out the portion of your outstanding bonds that we can lower the interest rate and produce an adequate level of savings and only refinance that piece. And you can see, when you look at the actual savings line here, if uniform savings, which would be about 110,000 per year, every year, starting in year one, ends up being about 2.2 million in savings over the life of the issue. And then when you're realizing a lot of that savings, well, you're realizing about 100,000 of savings every year throughout the life of the bonds. And so the present value of that future savings of 2.2 million is 1.97 million. And the reason I point out present value is that sometimes you can get lost in what I call the headline number, a big savings number, but if you don't realize that savings until, you know, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years down the road, what's that future savings in seventeen years really worth today? That accelerated solution does have a larger actual dollar savings, but it's all in the very last years. So 6.3 million in savings, but you're really only getting a present value savings of 1.8 million. So again, they're pretty close in the present value savings and it's something you'd want to look at. And I just would want to think through before you jump to saying, let's just take the largest number because it's the largest number, there may be some reasons that it's not the most beneficial to you now and over the life of the bonds. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and I said I was thirty years into my career and I didn't expect to be in my mid-fifties standing here using terms from fairy tale books that I read in kindergarten, but you see the term Cinderella refunding? That's a fairly new term in our industry. And what it refers to is that in 2017, they took away one of the refunding tools available to city, county, and school as part of the Tax Cut and Jobs Act. And you can't do a tax-exempt advanced refunding anymore. But the Cinderella structure or convertible structure is one where the interest rate starts out as a taxable rate, then on the date that the bond, the old bonds are paid off or redeemed, it can convert and drop to a lower tax-exempt rate. All of that's locked in upfront. And that's the exact approach we used on the Topeka and Bueller School District refundings that I had mentioned, we completed last week. And that's the approach. It's not the only option available to you, but it's the approach that would capture the most savings for the district at this point. Page thirty-three, and I'll show you a couple of more pages and then I'll stop and answer any questions. But one of the benefits of Raymond James is that we have Raymond James Bank. It's an affiliated bank as part of our organization and they do complete bond issues like this, the convertible structure or that Cinderella structure on a direct placement basis. We did not have your permission to go out and offer the bonds to investors or take quotes because you haven't adopted an authorizing resolution or even selected a firm and you don't want to taint the process by soliciting investor proposals at this stage until that firm has permission. But we did go internally to ask our bank to give us some interest rates and they said this is an issue that they would consider direct purchase of. And the interest rate range that they gave us, that initial taxable rate is probably going to be closer to the three and a quarter percent. For the first five years, your conversion date is in 2025 and then it would drop down to probably closer to a 2.85, 2.9% rate. And so we ran the savings that we're showing you is using that proposal from our internal bank. And so you can take some comfort in knowing that that is a worst-case scenario, that you've got that proposal in hand if it made sense to accept that. However, you know, for your benefit, if you were to select us to help with the refinancing, I'd want, once we had your permission, and there's some security industry rules about, we have to have your permission before we go out and get quotes from investors, but I'd want to send out a broad list of direct placement request for terms and proposals and see if we can find something better than what Raymond James Bank has proposed. The issues that we completed last week were all with Capital One. There's a number of other banks that are very active in this area. And I think it's just simply a matter of finding the best proposal for you, whether it's our affiliated bank or somebody else. But I did want to reference that the savings shown on the following page, page thirty-four, it's all based upon those quotes and this ties into that summary page that I had shared with you before, showing the 2.2 and the 6.3 million in savings. And then the last slide that I had here, I had mentioned that we ran the mill levy analysis before the proposed refinancing. We took it a step further and then page thirty-five shows what that mill levy could be after the proposed refinancing and we're using that uniform structure where you would lower debt service by about 110,000 each year. Again, I don't want to get too far ahead of where you're at in the process, but I thought it would be helpful to show you how we approached the refinancing, some of those initial calculations. But I would caution that, don't jump to any conclusions because typically, we run a lot of scenarios, look at a lot of different options, and then have a number of conversations with the administration to make sure there aren't other things that we should factor in that would impact kind of how and when you'd want to capture the savings on a refinancing. But I was always very proud to work with the Ottawa School District and very proud to say that I've worked with you for eighteen years. I did make a change in firms, but I just hope you'll give me the opportunity to continue working with you. And with that, I'll stop and answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Varenberg?
None? Okay, thank you very much.
Just while Greg is here, just to remind the board, our purpose here, and going through this with both Raymond James and with Piper Jaffray, is to start taking a look at how we want to deal with a refinance. And ultimately, the idea behind it is that on the 27th, if the board wants to continue with this process, we would choose one of the two firms, ultimately to give them the authority to make some decisions within the market for us when that market best suits our district. So that Raymond James or Piper Jaffray, whichever firm would be selected, every time there's a shift in the market that might be favorable, does not have to come back to us, wait for our board to act and adopt, and maybe we're out of the market situation by that time. So in essence, we give our authority to the firm to make some of those decisions for us, to make, ultimately make the best decision in terms of the monetary advancement for our district moving forward. So Greg, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will have Mrs. Whitaker present to us on the OHS enrollment packet. And we do need to take action on this tonight.
Good evening. I brought our career and college specialist, Mrs. Tharp, with me as well and she's going to help me present different parts of that. Before we get started though, I just wanted to take a minute, if it was okay, to celebrate the students and the staff at Ottawa High School. We've had, our graduation rate recently was recalculated by the state and it came back at 88.2%, which we originally thought it was at 86.7% for the class of 2019. So to have almost a nearly 2% hike in that is an awesome feat and a great moment of celebration for not only our students, but all the hard work that our teachers have been doing. And I think it really validates a lot of the changes that we have made at the high school with Cyclone Hour and our advisory and the direction that we're headed with our students. The other exciting bit of data is, at the end of first semester last year, my first year as principal at the high school, it was a little hard to swallow, but we had 262 students failing 614 courses. And this year, at the conclusion of semester one, we only have 94 students failing 151 courses, with 38 opportunities for students up until this Friday to meet with teachers and hopefully get those courses to passing mark so we don't have to worry about credit recovery. That is absolutely incredible. I don't, I don't know that any of us at the high school ever imagined that there would be a nearly 70% reduction in the number of Fs based on the efforts of our teachers and students. And so just want to give a shout out to our teachers at this time, just for all their tremendous hard work that they do with our students every day at the high school. I'm really proud of the work that they're doing. So with that being said, we'll kind of segue into our curriculum guide. This is a really daunting document. It is a little cumbersome at times for students and parents. And so one thing that we're still working on, we're going to come to you with all the contents of it, but we've been looking at a couple other school districts and how they use some little symbols to visually represent some of their courses, like what are pathways, what are NCAA required classes? And so we're going to be working on that. I know Mr. Grell's going to have to help us because we're having some issues with formatting. And so we will make sure that the content won't change, but once we have a document that's a little bit easier for parents and students to navigate, that we'll bring that back to you, just so we can get approval for that final formatting. What we do every year with this is Mrs. Tharp and I sit down with every department chair at the high school, as well as any teacher who teaches a career pathway. Our CTE courses are a little bit different than our departments and we meet with each of those teachers individually. And all of the changes that you will see in here have been discussed deeply. We've been having these conversations since the beginning of November and looking for ways that we can better enhance the opportunities that we offer at Ottawa High School for our students and just find ways that we can utilize the pathways we offer, maybe add a course here and there that can allow us to expand and offer an additional pathway or two by still meeting those needs of our students. And so when we go through everything, just I want to make that kind of disclaimer at the beginning. And so this is a long document, the whole table of contents, anything that was changed in the table of contents, we will talk about in the actual pages. If you just go to page two really quick. One thing that we made note in here, in previous years, we were using Career Cruising. We have switched to Zello is our, what we use during advisory class and what we'll be using during our student-led conferences. That is a way for students to explore careers and just to track their interests, their courses that they're taking, as well as any colleges or other opportunities that they want to seek. We're getting a lot better feedback from the students, 90% of the state. Ninety percent of the state has switched from Career Cruising to Zello. The students just think it's more user friendly and they like that. So we've updated that information. And then on page three through five is a big change that has come down on September eighteenth from the state. And so if you go down a little further, Dean, this chart right here talks about qualified admissions. And qualified admissions is the mission requirements for the six state schools in the state of Kansas. And recently, that group has met and what they've done, starting with our juniors, they have lowered the GPA. And rather than specifying specific courses students need to take, they're going to analyze each individual transcript and they will determine whether or not your classes that you took in high school meet their needs of admissions. So no longer are they saying you have to be in chemistry or you had to have had this science class. They'll say you need three years of science. They'll investigate your transcript and determine whether or not you meet their requirements. And so part of this is they are looking at a different student that is going on, moving on to a four-year university and they're trying to broaden their scope of student that they're gaining. And so this was a pretty big change that just came down the pipeline that will affect our current juniors.
I would say, Mrs. Whitaker, as you start looking through this, a 3.25 GPA is above a B average in terms of your, your total scores across the, your cohort years at, at a high school. Many people thought that this was an easier access to, to colleges when it started. The reality of it is, is it's gotten more difficult to gain access to college based upon the requirements that they've put together here. It almost flies in the face of what KSD is trying to do with post-secondary admissions and post-secondary success rates. And ultimately, you're going to see less students meeting their requirements to attend those, a greater push towards community college and, and technical colleges. It's kind of an odd situation that's existing here between KSD and the region schools. We'll kind of see how it all plays out, but there's certainly some, some butting of heads.
And I know the principals, like in our league, when we talk at our meetings, we were quite shocked that they made these changes so abruptly and just starting with our juniors. When they first started talking about it, they were talking about the incoming freshmen, which would be the current eighth graders or even the ninth graders, and then they made this change on September eighteenth. So we'll be working with our counselors to get everybody educated and caught up on that, but that's an important change in this handbook for parents and students. And then if you're on page nineteen, this is our biology course. Honestly, it was just some wording changes. This is all the table of contents that we cover and everything. So on page nineteen, it's in our biology course, just some wording in, to cover those NGSS, which are the standards that we teach in science course. And they outlined a little bit different how the students go about meeting those standards in their coursework. On page nineteen, the state every now and then changes course titles on us. And so human body systems has been part of our health science pathway for a number of years and the state is just changing that back to anatomy and physiology. And honestly, if you talk to most students or you talk, especially students that are in college and they're in the health field, anatomy and physiology is what there is more commonly called rather than human body systems. And then on page twenty, we had another wording change in chemistry. Did not change any of the requirements or the prerequisites, just worked on the wording a little bit to best describe what goes on in our chemistry courses. We are removing our botany and ecology courses. We have not taught those, I don't even know, in a number of years. And they don't meet the needs of any of our pathways. And so at this time, after talking with Mr. Dean and his department, we don't see a need to continue to keep those inside of our curriculum guide. There we go. And the teacher apparently retired prior to me being here that taught those courses. And so my guess is we don't have anyone licensed in those areas either. And then on page twenty-five, last year, we made extensive changes to the art curriculum. We took everything, rather than forcing all kids to take a intro class that touched on all the areas of art, we allowed them to go straight into metals now, straight into sculpture, straight into drawing or straight into painting. We had kept the advanced 3D art on there for this year because students that were caught in that sequence, they needed that course. Now that these seniors will be graduating, that course is no longer needed and students can just jump right into those art classes and matriculate through and some of them will end up in ceramics five, six, or seven by the time they graduate if they continue to take that semester-long course. And so that was the change in arts. And then on page twenty-nine, it's basically page twenty-nine and thirty, this is really exciting. A couple, it was last year, Mrs. Tharp went to one of the CTE conferences and they talked about unfunded pathways in the areas of theater and music. Mrs. Miller, our theater teacher who does phenomenal things for our students, heard Mrs. Tharp talk about it, jumped on this idea and has decided to become our first area that wants to test the waters of this unfunded pathway. Unfunded basically because the state doesn't recognize it as one of our career pathways. So unfortunately, we don't get any funding for it. However, we can choose to create a pathway and we can recognize students in that area. And so you will notice a plethora of courses that are being added in our theater department. Most of them are semester-long courses. They won't be taught necessarily every year. We'll have to do like an every other year thing to, in order to get the kids matriculated through all the courses, but we're really, really excited. Mrs. Miller is tickled to death about these changes for what they will do for our students. She also started a thespian society last year. And so by us doing this, our students will be able to earn more points and they will be able to get higher honors in that society as well, which is really exciting. And so you'll see she decided to take away the acting for camera and then there are all the courses that were added that I know that everybody hopefully got to see.
Kelly, one thing to think about as we, as we start looking at what's going on with theater, these are unfunded courses recognized by the state right now, but they are going to become funded, I would imagine, here fairly quickly. One of the major catalysts for determining whether something is funded or not funded is based upon demand and based upon wage. When we start looking at the, the system that we put into the Performing Arts Center that we will be training our students on in terms of lighting, sound, those types of things, it is the same system that they are utilizing in most major TV affiliates. KC TV Five, I think, has the, has the same board and same system that we do. Rachel Ray is using, they're teaching our kids. So our kids are utilizing the same components they're utilizing within the industry at this point, which is very exciting for us as we begin to continue to pave the way for our kids to fill those roles as they, as they move out of the high school environment.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we're really excited about these changes in our theater department and ultimately what it's going to do for our students. On page thirty-two, there's a new course. This is a, there it is, Introduction to Leadership and Leadership Service in Action. So this kind of fills two needs. Our students came to us, a lot of our students that are in our Renaissance Club. Renaissance offers a curriculum now, a two-semester curriculum based around a leadership class. When we started looking at that curriculum that the Renaissance program offers, Mrs. Kane is really excited about our Renaissance program and ultimately cultivating leaders in our building. We also started digging through our pathways and in our family community service pathway, there is a leadership course. And when you look at those career competencies, they align perfectly with what the Renaissance program wants to happen inside their leadership course. And so what we ultimately want to look at doing is offering a one semester-long Introduction to Leadership. And then I believe right below that, Dean, is an Advanced Leadership Course that students can take, ninth through twelfth grade and get students in there and just get them thinking about how they could become leaders at our high school. So this would also satisfy a need for a pathway as well as potentially be a new elective that we can offer students at the high school. And we're hopeful that we can offer it next year, but we know we have a really large freshman class coming in. And so once we get our master schedule, we wanted to get it in there as an op, as an option, just in case we're able to do that. And the next page is, I'm going to kind of turn it over to Mrs. Tharp. This is where we really get into all of our career pathways and start talking about the changes that we made in each pathway, as well as an additional pathway that we decided to offer based on our advisory board meetings this fall. Mr. Kotchik and his advisory board came back to us with a need that they feel like not only is in our community, but in our area. And so we wanted to look at adding a pathway.
Dean, can I have you go back to page thirty-one? It's the end part of theater. One of the things we were able to do with theater is, she kind of has what we call two strands. One of it is an acting and directing strand and the other is a film studies strand. And as a result of having those two strands, we are able to, to add audio and video production fundamentals and video production, which are two funded CTE classes, but they fit in this pathway also. So able to use the facilities that we have. We have a teacher that's very excited because it fits right into her film studies component. And when I showed her that, she, she was ready to go. So we just need a green room now. Hey, you know, I'll get there. So one of the things that I did is I went ahead and changed, oh, I'm sorry, changed the document so that the pathways are in order based upon the clusters. And so the first cluster that we have is our ag cluster. And so the first pathway that we have is our comprehensive ag science pathway. And you'll see that we took out agribusiness. And it is an application level class. And we went ahead and took it out because if you look down at the next one, it says internship. We got an email from Kurt Dillon at KSD that says, everybody's pathway in ag needs to have an internship. So we did what KSD told us to do, which is add the internship. This gives our ag both the power structure and this pathway, some opportunities to do some different kinds of things and also to involve our community more in our ag program. So internship was added to both pathways. The second piece that we did is some kids just don't like having to take welding one and be in FFA. And in conjunction with that, our community members came back and said, you really need to start thinking about a manufacturing pathway. And one of the intro courses in the manufacturing pathway is Intro to Welding. And so what Intro to Welding now does is each semester that gives kids the opportunity to take a welding class, but not necessarily, they still can, belong to FFA. So we're just expanding that to fit the needs of more students. And then again, our Ag Welding Two, which is part of this pathway, is now going to move to that first level of our Neosho County Level One Welding. It's just, when you set up the pathway, you can do it either way. And so we're just going to make that slight change. So kids will still be in welding. They'll just have an opportunity to get a certification. We're keeping our Ag Fabrication, which is another welding class. So kids will still have the opportunities in this pathway to have at least two opportunities for welding besides what's offered by Neosho.
We should say that the Neosho County Welding Class no longer has a price tag.
No, it does not.
That is costly to us. I think it costs eighteen dollars or something like that.
That is for the test. And kids, if they pass, walk away with two different certifications in welding along with their OSHA certification. So that's three possible certifications that they can get in one year.
Yes, sir.
While you're on that with Neosho and welding, they're currently using our welding shop four hours a day?
Mm-hmm.
Will that go up or go down?
It's the same. Right now, we're still slotted for the two sections with our students and then the students from a couple of the high schools. And then we could look at adding more if the need occurs, but right now, we'll stay at the two sessions of welding offered through the OSHA. So they work in our welding room in the morning and then our welding classes.
Are in the afternoon.
Right now, we have a little overlap because there was a little, we did not think through some things. We created the master schedule last year and so we know we have to be careful when planning next year.
Yeah, I've heard about some students who wanted to take but Neosho classes in the morning, but because of Neosho Community College being in there.
Oh, okay. Sure about that.
Okay. So anyway, I just wondered if, you know, do we, do we talk to students and?
Yeah, so our master schedule, what we do is we find out what courses our students want to be in and then we build the master schedule around their needs. But I say sometimes it's like college. We are confined to what we can offer. We have the seven periods of the day right now. That's really why we want to look at a more flexible schedule so we can move things around. Because right now, if I've got a heavy hitter like band in the morning or health science in the morning and that's the only time that can be taught, because that's the only time I have that teacher available, then we have to look at some of the other pathways and some of the other electives and move them around the day. It takes months creating the master schedule and we do our absolute best to meet the needs of all of our students, but sometimes we do fall short in that. The one thing that I know that kind of messed us up this year was health science and some of our ag classes. We had several students come in the office because they wanted to finish both pathways and health science one and two is offered in the morning and so were some of the agriculture classes. And so we've got a little notebook that we basically keep track of all those little conflicts that come up. And then when we're building the master schedule for the next year, we make sure that we're careful about looking at those things. So I know that one was come, that, so a couple of students came to the office with that conflict this year and we tried our best to work through it. Part of what we're hoping to be able to do as well with our, our ag pathway, and we were talking to Mr. Lazly about this, is expanding their opportunities. We're looking at the greenhouse. We're looking at getting that brought back and to repair and so we could actually use it. And then when that happens, we've talked with him too about rotating some of our courses like our agribusiness. We might be coming back next year and saying, agribusiness might be a great thing for us to do every other year. When you look at the ag competencies, agribusiness is really covered in a lot of them. And with that greenhouse back and operating in its full form, we can really touch on a lot of those competencies and make sure we're getting the kids what they need. The other conversation we're having right now is with Allen Community College. They offer a lot of courses online. The great thing about online classes is we'll talk with Neosho Community College, but there's no jurisdiction. And so we have, we can access those courses. They're free to our students and they also mail us a textbook for our students to utilize in those courses. So if there are other areas with an ag that our students want to dig down deeper that we can't offer within our current schedule, we'll be able to hopefully offer some of those opportunities to our students as well. And we're really excited about that. And there's a lot of the other schools that we have kind of contacted to collaborate with, and that's what a lot of schools are starting to do, to be able to offer even more for students in the area of agriculture, to meet the needs in those two pathways.
Okay. Well, you're talking to an ag econ major and so when you talk about dropping ag econ, I know that the ag econ, like at Kent State and some other schools are kind of the choice that people go into, even like vet med. They start out in ag econ and then move over to vet med. So I'm just, I'm glad you're thinking about bringing it back because I, I think from a standpoint of being most versatile at a college, that's the most versatile for a student to start an ag program at university and then move into something else.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And when it comes to vet science, that's, that falls into our health science and so that's why we have a little bit of a conflict with our health science and our ag. And so trying to be able to work it all out.
Okay. Very good.
Our next pathway is Agro, Architect and Construction. And what, the biggest change we made here was adding production and blueprint reading. This came up in several different advisory meetings. And so I talked to Mr. Tachek and he's really on board with teaching this class. It also fits into our aviation maintenance pathway. So we're able to pull in another pathway and actually we'll pull in a third pathway, which is our manufacturing pathway if it gets approved. So again, trying to get the most bang out of our buck. Digital media, the only change we made in digital media was the addition of the two classes for the theater pathway. You can see that right here, Principles of Marketing is a class that Mr. Wallace teaches, but Ms. Lynch doesn't have it in her pathway currently. And so what I did is I just, I went ahead and put the classes that are in the pathway. We know if a kid takes, a student takes Principles of Marketing and we're trying to look at the, at their pathway completion record, we can add it, we'll know to check it off and that would fulfill another obligation for that pathway. But again, it can be very overwhelming for parents to see twenty different classes underneath the pathway. Graphic design. Again, took out this intro class. Mrs. Fisher's not had career and life planning as part of her pathway in probably seven or eight years. Why it was left in the curriculum guide, I don't know, but her intro class is computer applications. And so that's why we took out career and life planning. And so, that's why we took out Career and Life Planning. Next pathway is Business Finance, which falls underneath the Finance Cluster. Again, if you go to page forty at the very end, we added, oh, a little bit, yeah. We added a Finance Workplace Experience, having to do with some of the things that are coming on with our work with Roger Maxwell and being able to provide that work-based experience. And so, we added it to this pathway. Health Science probably had the most changes. Took out Health Science One. And now, they are just going to let us have Intro to Health Science as a semester class instead of Health Science One, which was a year-long class. Cut down on the competencies a little bit. That was kind of an interesting scenario there. Again, Human Body Systems has been changed to Anatomy and Physiology. Health Science Three is being taken out. That's our internship level. And is being replaced with another class that has a different name on it. Health, well, I'll get to it in just a minute. But it'll still, they'll still have an internship opportunity. It just won't be called Health Science Three. Keeping all of our CNA, CMA, and we, medical terminology. And if you go to page forty-two, these are some of the additions. We are working with Franklin County Ambulance Department to hopefully, in the near future, be able to offer an EMT class where when our students are done with this pathway and they graduate from high school, Franklin County can hire them to work as an EMT within our community. Pharmacology is another online class from Neosho. Pharmacy Technician is an online class in a program that they can start taking from Allen County, which is not offered at Neosho. And here is the Healthcare Work Experience, the internship. They just changed a lot of names. Hospitality and Tourism Cluster, Restaurant and Event Management. There was just, the red that you see are classes that still exist. They were just kind of put in the wrong spot. So, we went ahead and cleaned them up and put them in the correct pathways along with taking out Principles of Marketing. Again, it's, Principles of Marketing isn't in this pathway. It was several years ago, but it's no longer in this pathway. So, we went ahead and took it out. Then you go to Travel and Tourism. And that's where you see Entrepreneurship is being, is being removed from the pathway in the sense that if they're in the Marketing Pathway or the Finance Pathway, they can still take Entrepreneurship and we can apply it. But it's not really being, Mrs. Cohen's not teaching the Entrepreneurship class. And again, Principles of Marketing were taken out. Early Childhood, the only addition to Early Childhood is our teacher would like to be able to add Human Growth and Development B, which is a year-long Human Growth and Development class. And so, we're adding that for her, for her use. And then, in the Family and Community Service Pathway, adding the Leadership and Action Class, which we talked about earlier. Information Technology and Career Cluster, that's our Information Support and Services Pathway. There were not any changes to that pathway. Neither were there any changes to Web and Digital Communication. Law and Public Safety, Emergency and Fire Management, page fifty. Again, you can see where you're going to add the First Aid CPR class from Franklin County Ambulance along with the EMT, which again, gives these students the opportunity upon graduation to be able to take the test and get several certifications. The First Aid and CPR class and Emergency Responder class also fits in with our Law Enforcement Pathway. And this is the new pathway. Manufacturing. If you look at the labor data in the state of Kansas, one of the major needs we have in Kansas is fulfilling manufacturing positions. And I know Dr. Cobb's can talk about this one. And so, when we started looking at it, we knew that there were just a couple of classes that we really needed to add in order to have this pathway available for our students, but also for our community. So, again, our Production and Blueprint Reading class, which is back in our Agriculture, in our Architect class, and then our Intro to Welding class. And then, you can see our Welding One from Ag fits into this pathway. And then, our Welding Two class, which would be, which is going to become our Level One at Neosho, also fits into this pathway. So, we would be able to have another pathway with only adding just a couple of classes and using current staff. Marketing. Yeah, adding computer graphics. If you look at where marketing is today, anybody that has any talent with computer graphics are picking, are being picked up by people that have marketing programs. And so, we wanted to make sure that we added that to this pathway. Oh, this is our Aviation Pathway. Hi, hi, do you want to? You want to take that one?
Yeah, so we, in essence, were flying the plane the last couple of years before we really knew the pieces. The state had not come out with an official plan for what that pathway was going to look like. And so, now that we know what a pathway can look like and how our students can complete the Aviation Pathway, we've relied on our Advisory Board a lot with our two teachers that are currently instructing those courses to determine the path. And so, if you go down a little bit, Dean, we've been utilizing the, right there, the Hand Powers and Tools. We've been utilizing a curriculum by AOPO because that was kind of what was recommended to us. Now that the state has come out with the pathway, we are looking at going down more of an Aviation Systems route. And so, our students currently this year are taking a Hand and Powers Tool course with Mr. Kotchik that satisfies one of the introductory level classes. Aviation Fundamentals, we had actually been teaching as a year-long class. But now that they've come out with the pathway, we know we can scale that back down to a semester. So, we can get two groups of students through that course if need be. And then, our Aviation Systems, which we had been calling Aviations Two, is a year-long course. And that's when students really get into the hands-on building of a plane and doing different things. Right now, they're building a model plane that they hope to fly over to Dr. Cobb's here in the near future. We've crashed it a couple of times, but the kids are doing a nice job. And they told me they've got another test run for me next week. And then, the other course that we want to add through that, Talking with our Advisory Board, is that Drones. There's a course we can send our teachers to over the summer. The state pays for them to get trained and certified in teaching drones. They get a, I think it's an FDA certification through that. And so, then they will be able to come back and teach that course to our students. And so, right now, through working with our Advisory Board, we think this is the best path. The, where we're really get our kids their unique experiences, like adding that, that internship in all of our pathways is really where we can start personalizing things with kids. And then, that will be a piece that these students can do as well. And we'll work on our partnerships with the city and other companies to be able to provide those students with meaningful opportunities. And then, is that the last one?
That's the last one.
That is the last one. So, at this point, we will turn it over for questions. And those are all of the changes within our pathways and our required courses that we offer at the high school. And I apologize, I know it was a lot.
Is there a motion to approve the course guide that's presented for OHS?
So moved.
Seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes six oh.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Whitaker and Mrs. Starpe, I want to thank both of you. I know that it's a great deal of work putting together the, the course guide. Hopefully, what it does show to our board and anybody in the audience watching tonight is that enrolling in a class at the high school is very different than what it was even ten years ago. There is a lot of opportunity that exists there with specific, with specific opportunities towards your interest level, which is a great thing that you're doing at Ottawa High School. I appreciate you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Bybee will be presenting district scores for winter assessments, including MAP and interim state assessments.
All right, hello. I'm going to go fairly quickly through these. But please feel free to ask questions if you do have questions. But overall, we're very pleased with the direction that we're moving, with the work that we're doing with curriculum, with, with really having opportunities to look K-12 with, with our work that we're doing with MTSS and looking to see how, how our assessments are being used. I think our, are the results are starting to show the movement that's happening. So, what you're looking at here on this first screen, this is our student growth, where the blue bars are the observed growth with MAP. And the diamonds are what the projected growth was for the kids at their RIT level. So, I obviously want to see that we are achieving that projected growth. So, if our, the bars are, are at or above our, the diamond, then we view that as our kids are making progress, the progress that we want to see. So, the top one is Fall, our Fall Student Growth Summary. And the bottom one is Winter. So, we did not test MAP this year with, for fifth grade in winter. That's why there's a blank there. And then, for Math, we only do sixth grade. They do a few kids with seventh and eighth in winter, just as needed. So, those, there's not enough of them to be able to show that. But overall, we see that there's some movement in sixth grade down. And so, one of the things that we would look at in this instance is look to see where the scope and sequence is at. What are the skills that the kids are learning this first part of the, the year between Fall and Winter? And are they, are they missing some of those skills that, that they're showing here on MAP? And then, the reading. With reading, again, the, the Fall is on top and the Winter's results are on the bottom. First of all, I would point out our second and third grade are doing a fabulous job and have to think that our Fontis and Penel classroom is helping to move that forward. There's so much that our teachers are feeling that our kids are more experienced now with various types of text that they're reading, which broadens their ability to be able to understand and analyze and comprehend different types of, of text. Remember, I will remind you, our second graders, this is their first year that they actually have to read the test themselves. In first grade, the test is read to them. So, for them to continue to see, for them to see that growth, we were pretty excited to see that. Third grade continued to also show growth. And then, fourth grade, I know that there were some, with implementation of Fontis and Penel Classroom, we got our materials late. This is their professional learning year. So, there was a little slippage there. So, we are hoping to see changes with that as we move forward with the year. Our sixth and seventh grade, our eighth grade did well. Our sixth and seventh grade, as we see that dip, one of the things that we have, have had conversations with, with our teachers is looking at what, what is, what, why is that? Is it because our, the scope and sequence? Which I can understand scope and sequence a little bit more with math. But with reading, we have to look at, what are those skills that the kids are getting that first semester? And how are we not transferring that to the assessment scores? Seventh grade, actually, when you look at winter to winter, they actually did make their observed growth. So, it's just a little different way to look at that. So, at least we've made progress from last year's winter scores as far as seventh grade goes. But one of the things we did on January third is that we started with looking at our scope and sequence with writing. And writing is a huge indicator of students' ability to understand and comprehend their, their reading. So, we are realizing our writing has a lot of work to, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to offer that consistency with our kids' expectations for those writing skills, K-12. So, we started off those conversations, January third, and we have, are in the process of developing some writing outcomes where we have expectations for our, what each, at, at the end of each grade, what our kids would be able to do writing. So, we're hoping to, that we'll be able to continue to see progress with especially our middle school to be able, when we're talking about our reading and writing. The other piece that I would talk, would, would point out here too is with that writing piece, we're also talking, and this is also through Fontis and Penel Classroom, helping our teachers, there's a lot of questions for grammar. And the best way to be teaching grammar is through writing. So, if we're not teaching writing, there's, grammar does not transfer as well if you're just doing grammar worksheets or for the old, when you had to do the sentences, you know, way back when. That is not the best way for kids to learn grammar. So, that's another focus that we are having conversations about is how, how we need to increase the grammar skills. Okay, so then, this is just another form, another form of looking at our MAP scores. What this is, is, and, and I apologize because I noticed as I'm looking through this, the low, I didn't have the little legend or key on this one. The low is the yellow, kids, the percent of kids who scored in the low level. The red is low average and the blue is average and above. So, we obviously would want to get more blue as we go from Fall to Spring, or, I'm sorry, Fall to Winter. So, with Math, actually, this shows how we're, we are making progress. Almost every grade level made gains in that average and above percent of students scoring average and above. So, this is, this was very exciting to be able to see that, that we are increasing our, those kids that are scoring average and above percentile in Math. And then, reading, the same thing, is that especially in first grade, went down a bit. Second grade, third and fourth grade, most of the fourth grade, went up in all of their average and above. Again, it just shows that, that our focus, our teachers are really working hard to be able to look at, who are those kids that are in the low and low average ranges? And what are we doing to be able to support and fill the gaps that they may be showing? So, the, and I attribute a lot of that to our, our Fontis and Penel Classroom. So, as far as the gap goes, if, if you remember this from in the Fall, we are looking for the green. The green means that we have, we are closing the gap. So, the difference between what the, the student's average score was in relation to the MAP norm, and what was that difference? And did we see growth? And really, again, this is pretty exciting that our, we saw growth in Math. And really, when you look at fourth grade, that is almost right at, it's, they didn't drop much. They're right at, within that standard deviation. And then, same with reading. So, those are exciting, that even if they didn't reach the norm, we are seeing a decrease in the gap between where the kids are scoring and, and what the norm is for MAP for Winter.
The other thing that I'd point out, if you look at the, the graph prior to this one, you can, we talked about sixth, seventh, and eighth not, not meeting their growth and, and some frustrations there with scope and sequence. But if you also look at them in terms of, of this graph, with your red level being average and, and above, we have the highest majority of our students in that average and above range here in, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. If you include low average in that, you're typically looking at over eighty percent of your kids being at average or above. Although, that's not where we want to be. That's a fairly high percentage in comparison to where we're at with the younger grades. So, as you start talking about their transition through the years, we're building those kids back up to where they need to be as they start with us at some fairly low levels when you start looking at it overall. So, it's a positive thing to look at.
Thank you. So, then, what we did with fifth grade this year is what we, this came about as we were going through our MTSS restructuring and having conversations about what are the assessments that we're giving? Are we assessing too much? Are we using the assessments data to be able to really change the actual instruction? Yes, we need to be able to show growth. But we also need to make sure that the measures that we're using can help us make changes in the classroom instructionally. So, with the interim assessments, these are given in October, December, and February. We did not make the October time. So, we now just gave the first one in December. We will give it again in February and then before the state assessment. Our goal in using the interim assessments is to be able to increase the amount of students that we can move up into that Level Two and Level Three range. We want a very small number of our kids reaching that Level One range. If we can get to Level Four, fabulous. But the. But the more kids we can get in that level three range is what we would be moving, pushing for. So while we did miss, and the teachers, a lot of teachers even said they did miss um not having that MAP data for winter to be able to kind of, because that's something they're so used to doing. Um they were happy that they didn't have to give both. And the, they actually learned more specific specifics about the standards from the interim assessment and what they were in watching the administration of it. Um and then also being able to uh see how the kids scored. So what I have on here is just three little examples of the reports that you get from the interim assessment. So um the first one is your English, oh, thank you, uh is that is an example of the ELA. It will show you the actual question or the standard that the question was that basically based on. And then what was the school percentage that got that question correct and the state percentage? So um overall, we did really well as when you look at in comparison with the state, the number of kids that got questions correct, um compared to the state, we actually did very well. The one down below um is what they would, a teacher would get specifically with each student. You would get a report like this. It shows that the student might have gotten partial credit, no credit, full credit, or they left it unanswered. Those little um lines in questions one and two, that was just for ELA because they also were trying out some questions for the state assessment. And so they gave, they didn't charge those against the kids because those are things that the state is just trying to to utilize um this assessment for. Then they also can get this report where they they can see their whole class at one time. So you can take that one standard with that question, evaluate numerical expressions with parentheses, and you can see how many of of our kids got it correct and how many got it incorrect. That's valuable because then they're able to, at a quick glance, be able to see, hey, the majority of my kids have this. So we don't need to spend a lot of time on this standard. But this one, there's maybe, you know, because only four kids of just this screenshot got it correct, this is one we maybe need to look at. Or they can talk about, is that a standard that we've even taught yet? If it's not a standard that we've taught yet, that would make sense why a lot of them got it incorrect. But then you can also see those kids that got it correct. And that, they can use that as a piece of of documentation that, hey, that kiddo already has that. I'm going to verify that this kiddo understands the standard. And so we don't need to spend a whole lot of time and we can move the kids forward, that kiddo forward in in their learning. So there's a lot of things we, um the teachers determined that we could learn from this test. Uh and you will see that in looking at it eighty, with ELA, eighty percent, eighty-eight percent of our questions were scored within five percent of at, of, at, or above the state average. Now, the sidebar in that is that some of the state averages were really low. So we don't want to keep that as our goal, like, yeah, we've got state average, okay, we're good, let's just coast. We want to be way above state average because there were some pretty low percentages there for the state average. And then this is the teachers, um fifth grade teachers met on January third and we talked about the reports. And then they also, these are kind of the, some of the things that that they learned from this interim or that they want, had conversations about. You know, the, what we heard as we were administering this is some of the teachers were like, wow, okay, I just taught this and I did not go to the rigor to that level that the state is asking the question. So it helps them to see too, to be able to change their instruction, to be able to um ask questions in different ways. Because I know you've probably heard from your own kids um going through testing, it's like, oh, you know they knew that, but they asked it in such a way that it seemed confusing to the kids. So about expanding the terminology that can be used when they're teaching a specific skill. Or to be able to um really and help develop that concept more than just can they just answer a a quick answer. So uh that all came from the teachers. I was very pleased with the conversations that they were having. So these are the things that we will be working towards as we are now, um as they're teaching their their math in ELA and they're focusing on that before we do our interim assessment again in February. Any questions about any of the data that was I was just shared? The last thing I just wanted to share with you is I know we had conversations about, are we testing our kids too much? So when it, when you look at a testing schedule, it might look like we are because you have to, we're testing K-12 um various times and we have to have these testing schedules. But in reality, with a student who is um who who's tested, the students who are tested the most, most are our fifth and our eighth grades because they also do the state assessments in in addition to the MAP and um in any of the other tests that they're doing. But when you figure up the hours, the amount of hours, it's really less than one percent of the ti, of their time in the year that they are testing um hours. Because the ta, the assessments have all refined themselves so much that it's not, they're, they don't take as long. So even the interim or the state assessments are really averaging forty-five to sixty minutes for for one of the tests. For so, of course, ELA, math, and science. Uh MAP, kind of the same way, we allow an hour, maybe we plan for scheduling an hour and fifteen minutes or an hour and a half. But most kids, when you look at the amount of time that it takes them to take that assessment, it's really um a much shorter time than that. And then you do have a few of those kids who take longer.
So you, since I am one who is monitoring testing, I know that's shocking to you, okay? I did your little test there and it comes up to about twelve, thirteen hours a year if you do your one percent deal. I am shocked that it's only one percent because I guess my my thought process is, I'm not challenging you, but I will re recalculates some because I think we, at least from my perception, we test more than twelve or fourteen hours. But you're saying we only test between twelve and fourteen?
That a student, right, that a student is involved in that testing. So now, when you look, yeah, when you look at a school, yeah, they're gonna, it's going to be more because they're testing in elementary, you're testing first, second, third, fourth, fifth. So they're, so that scheduling piece feels like we're doing a lot more testing. But those kiddos, and even like FastBridge, the way we have um for elementary, the way we have what's called the FAST team that goes in and does the administration, uh when, in watching that, especially this winter time now that if we've done it once, the, that we have so many people administering this test that the classes were done with even individual testing within twenty minutes. Teachers were like, oh, my goodness, that went so fast. And then when they did it in their own class, it was a very short amount of time, thirty minutes, I think, for. So they're realizing it's really not taking as long, which is a good thing because then kids aren't sitting for so long too. That the tests, they're refining the tests more and more, yet we're still getting the data that we're getting.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mrs. Pibbey? Thank you so much.
Okay, yes.
We appreciate all the time you put into making these graphs for us and explaining it. Thank you.
Yeah, you are so welcome.
All right, next is the calendar presentation. Dr. Cobb's is going to present the two calendar options. Uh we are not taking any uh motion or any action on this tonight, it's just for discussion.
No, really, there's not a lot to present. You've seen both calendar options. Um the purpose in bringing them here was to make sure that we make them public and that you have an opportunity to discuss and ask questions about them publicly if you would like. Uh you've seen uh teacher responses to to the two calendars. Um so at that, you can look at them and ask any questions if you have regarding the two calendar options. I will tell you that my recommendation on January twenty-seventh would be that we adopt uh calendar number one, which has a starting August seventh and ending, I think, May fourteenth with teacher's last day, May seventeenth.
I did have a thought. Um I was wondering why on your second calendar you made that semester end after break? I know from the teacher comments, a lot of them considered that a non-option.
Yep, so it, the the response to that is is based upon the number of days allotted for each semester. So when you push the start time back, you ultimately created, if you actually split it at the end, and this is really a secondary issue, you create more days in the second half of the year than they would have teaching the same class in the first half of the year. So in essence, you have classes that are covering more or less material in a semester based upon those courses. So the purpose behind splitting the calendar is making sure that the two semesters have equal or as close to equal number of days as possible within them.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobb's?
You think about this, just to make an example, Neosho County has semester courses. So if you have an extra week in one course than you do in the other split between semesters, that means that one set of those students is either covering far more material or far less material than the other group. So you want to make sure that your two semesters are as equal uh to the number of days uh as possible as you start splitting your your courses in half. Yes, sir.
I know it's just semantics, okay, so I I'll grant you this before I say, but there is something to be said if you tell somebody they're starting on August seventh versus August tenth. I think part of the teacher pushback is that they're coming back, if I'm reading this right, if I understand some comments made to me. Uh and and there's probably, I guess I should say, is there a way to adjust that they come back that following Monday?
So I would tell you that we looked at this option as well. And if you scroll down, Dean, if you scroll down to show December, um what will happen there if you push that one day back? Again, this is a contract day, so you don't change the hundred and eighty-one days in the calendar. One way or another, they're making up that day. If you push it back, it creates a one-student day in December, on December twenty-first. I don't know any teacher that wants students to show up to school for one day prior to break on a Monday. If you push it to the next semester, then it also follows on a Monday, which would ultimately be May seventeenth there. And again, I don't know any teacher in the district that would want to have students for one day on a Monday prior to to summer break. So you push it back on the other side, which means they come to the Friday prior to.
Plus, you wouldn't want a parent. I mean, the parents wouldn't be real happy about that either.
Nobody would be very happy with that calendar. Nobody.
Right, okay.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, I I agree with you, Harold. As a teacher, I'd much rather be in my cabin in Colorado on August the seventh, but it is what it is.
I just heard, you know, of all the things I've heard.
Yep, yep.
You know, uh it's, that's what I've heard, so.
It's certainly there, yep. And again, if you look at the second calendar and pushing it back, the problem that that creates is then your semesters are very different in terms of the number of days.
Yeah, I know, I'm not suggesting that we move this, I, as a parent, I'd crucify you as well. So, you know, I mean, I just, you can't have finals after Christmas break. I get that.
Plus, all of our buildings are air-conditioned. I mean, I taught when this was the only building in the whole district that was air-conditioned, well, except for the high school. So it makes a big difference, having climate control.
Okay, very good.
Other thoughts? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb's. Okay, next up, we have Dustin Avi from Piper Jaffray, who is going to be presenting on refinance options for the USC two ninety bonds. Welcome.
Yep. Quicker?
Thank you.
Um you can just talk, that's fine, and I actually have some other documents in here too, so be a little hidden. Thank you very much. Appreciate uh, appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. And you're probably looking at your agenda and also seeing our name on our cover. And we actually changed names as of last Monday. We acquired a firm. If you're interested, you can Google Sandler O'Neill. It was a firm that was um, was in the World Trade, was located in the World Trade Center on nine eleven and lost about three-fourths of their employees on that day. And so as part of the acquisition, it was very, very important for both companies to keep some identity, uh given the circumstances. So we're excited to to present to you as Piper Sandler, which is going to take some time for me to get used to. I told Dr. Cobb and Terry to keep this um fairly brief. There's a lot of documents. I will not go through every page. Um but really wanted to focus um not only the refinancing, but primarily really how the refinancing um impacts a long-term financial plan. And I think it's, when we think about refinancing, it's important. And as we discussed back in August and September, when we talked about the 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 least refinancing for RRC, um it's really, really critical as we think about whether it's financing, budgeting, long-term capital planning. We're thinking about in the context of we, are we putting the district in a better long-term financial position? So any refinancing that we think about or propose should be considered in that context. And so I really want to focus a few minutes on um financial plans, uh what those options look like and what sort of financial condition the current district is currently in and what that leads for future options. So tab number one, I won't spend a whole lot of time on this because we all know the interest rates are are at record lows or near record lows. Just because rec, bond rates are at record lows doesn't always um mean that we should be refinancing right now. Okay, there's some bond math that go into the calculations with respect to, does interest rate reduction provide sufficient savings to consider refinancings? So again, there's some interest rate charts there for your view. Tab number, I'm sorry, past that. Um there's some things that go into financial planning and in your, in your book, um right after the interest rate charts. There's a couple of things that we look at and consider when evaluating, developing a financial plan. Again, these are things that you've seen and talked about before. Valuation growth is a big component of financial plan. And you can see historically, um the district has, over the last ten years, has trended at about one point eight percent valuation growth. We can make things look very, very good if we assume a higher valuation growth, right? So think about this in the context of retirement planning. If we assumed our retirement rate of return and our 401K, our IRAs is going to be twenty percent like it was this past year, okay, we'd be retiring very, very early, right? That'll be great. But in a financial plan, I think it's important that we be fairly conservative in all of our assumptions and analysis to make sure that we're protecting ourselves for things that we don't control. And in in school districts, there's a lot of things we do not control with respect to financial plans. We don't control valuation, we don't control state aid, we don't control enrollment. So we think about those things. It's important that we develop a very conservative financial plan to protect, to protect us against things we don't control. Most notably, if you'll notice, from two thousand eight to two thousand fifteen, there was very little growth in valuation. Uh we have experienced relatively favorable growth the last four or five years. But there have been times, most notably after the financial crisis, where we did not grow much at all. And so when we look at financial plan, we want to make sure that we understand that things, times are not always going to be good, right? We have to plan for things that that may happen that aren't so favorable. And then the other thing that we're thinking about more also, and you may have heard of the black store theory, which may impact Ottawa school districts. The black store theory relates to box stores appealing their valuation. There's currently a lawsuit going on in Kansas City. If that lawsuit were to rule in favor of, in this case, Walmart, there could be a trickle-down effect to all communities that have box stores, and in your case, distribution centers, with respect to how the state would assess those properties. And in doing so, that have a pretty significant impact on your evaluation. So we think about those things in the big context of a financial plan, so things that we need to be planning about, thinking about now in the context of of refinancing as well. The following page is Mill Evi history, and again, I won't get too much into the Mill Evi history. You know, part of this, as we get into tab number two, uh you're part of this conversation, and I appreciate Dr. Cobb's and Terry having these conversations um in September and August and in thinking about long-term strategies and Mill Evi options and what is the best options for the school district. And and one of those things that that you um evaluated and took action on was going from thirty percent to thirty-three percent local option budget, right? So that course of action put the district in a better financial position without requiring a Mill Evi increase. Well, without requiring a Mill Evi increase allows us to shift mills. So we're in a very good financial position in our bond and interest fund. It allows us to shift mills from bond and interest to our local option budget without increasing the total Mill Evi to the school district, which is a a positive event. So when we think about strategies, and this is an example of our financial analysis, which you've seen before, we're assuming a one percent valuation growth, again, so less than our ten-year average, much less than what we've grown in recent years. So in the event of something that we can't control, we've conservatively projected what the Mill Evi for bond and interest would be required to be to pay off our existing bonds. The one thing I want to point out, which I think is very, very critical, is the second column, or third column from your right, which is called fund balance. Your current financial position is critical to long-term objectives. I think that's what's most important about this whole conver- I think that's what's most important about this whole conversation is there's a lot of options for the district to consider with respect to refinancing, mill levy strategies, capital improvement planning, paying off bonds early, reducing the mill levy, or a combination thereof. This fund balance is critical to those decisions going forward. And you can see that fund balance continues to grow each year. And you can see that on the far right-hand column, there's a percentage. And as we talked to Dr. Cobb's and Terry about back in September and October, maintaining a healthy fund balance gives you the budgetary flexibility for things that may happen in the next 10 years. When we do planning, okay, at the very, very least, we want to see somewhere around 50% fund balance, okay? So obviously, you're in a position where you're much better than that 50%, which gives you a lot of flexibility for a lot of different options. So I really want to walk through just a couple of those options and what this looks like. The next page. The next page shows the mill levy drop of 1.6 mills, okay? And the mill levy drop of 1.6 mills is a result of going from 30% LOB to 33% LOB, okay? So it shows, that this is showing is that the district, as you're aware, has the capacity within its current budget to lower the bond and interest mill levy by 1.6 mills, transfer those mills to LOB, and you're still in a great financial position in the bond and interest fund. Okay? I think it's important to note, we, we mentioned one of the things being this, this fund balance provides capital improvement planning and what I call payment capacity. There's no intent or no discussion of any bond projects currently in the district. But in 10 years from now, there may be, right? You, you operate and maintain lots of buildings. Education changes, technology needs change. There may be a potential for a bond issue. Based upon your payment capacity currently and the current mill levy, you have about $18 million of bond capacity without increasing the mill levy in 2030. So again, very, very important from an objective perspective. What are we trying to accomplish? What are our objectives of the school district? The next page says, well, one of our objectives may be is how low can we drop the mill levy? Okay, so we, we look at this and say, we could drop the mill levy as low as 3.64 mills, beginning with the 2020-21 budget, and still maintain a fund balance so that by the time our bonds were repaid, our fund balance would be down to almost nothing. Okay? Keeping in mind that if valuation grows at more than what's being predicted, we're in a much better financial position, okay? If it doesn't grow at 1%, and we see a decline, we still have preserved our capacity within our bond fund to protect ourselves against something we can't control. Okay? So refinancing. Tab number two. There are a lot of different scenarios, okay? And what, what I think is most important, I referenced bond math. And I'll put this in the context of a mortgage, okay? So we have, I have a mortgage outstanding at 4%, but the current market's at 3%. The only caveat is I can't prepay my mortgage for five years. I can still refinance it, but in order for me to refinance it, I got to refinance in, in my new mortgage, the amount to pay off my old mortgage, plus the interest that would, that I would have to pay between now and the five-year period. Do I do it? And that's the question, do I do it? So when we look at bond issues, the same sort of thing happens in bond issues, okay? So your, your bond issue has a prepayment date of 9/1 of '25. That's when it can be prepaid. We can still refinance ahead of that date, but in order to refinance, we have to refinance all the interest that would be due on those bonds between now and 2025. So as an example, the district has about $63 million of bonds that are eligible to be refinanced on 9/1 of '25. If we were to refinance all of those bonds today, we'd have to issue $74 million in bonds. So we'd borrow 10 more, $10 million more than what's currently outstanding to refinance those bonds. Many of us have a 401K or IRA. We put money into those accounts every quarter, every year, every month, whatever it may be. It's called dollar-cost averaging. That same sort of concept can be applied to refinancing. With bond issues, you don't have to refinance all bonds at one time. You can refinance a certain portion now, a certain portion in two years, a certain portion in three years, a certain portion in five years, okay? Because what do we don't control? We don't control interest rates. So as an example. As an example, you'll see on the very bottom left-hand corner of this analysis, what this is showing is that if, if we were to consider refinancing today, okay, there'd be about $2.23 million of savings, okay? But we'd be refinancing about $35 million worth of bonds, okay? If we were to wait, and again, the, the value of time makes a huge difference. If we were to wait until 2025, as an example, and the rates were the same as what they were today, by just refinancing $28 million of bonds, our savings would be $8.5 million. Okay? So it's important to understand the bond math with, as it pertains to refinancing, and understanding that the value of time is very, very important, okay? Understanding interest rates are very, very important. What this also shows is that in this example, you still preserve budgetary flexibility. So look, if you look at your fund balance column, okay, very, very healthy, okay? You still preserve all the budgetary flexibility to manage things that we don't control or unknown yet. And it allows you time to develop goals and objectives which change every year, right? Your capital improvement program changes every year, okay? Valuations change every single year. Recession's, economy, every single year could be something different. Preserving budgetary flexibility is important in the context of looking at refinancings. We could show you today an option to accelerate your bonds by five years today, right? And you'd be saving about $7 million of, of interest, okay? To make that work, we would have to grow it more than, more than what your 10-year average has been in valuation. So understanding the math of it, understanding the financial plan of it is critical. We can always pay off our bonds, right? Come 9/1/25, if we're still in great shape and our fund balance looks good, we can pay it off with cash if we wanted to. So it's understanding those goals and objectives, I think, are very, very important to the plan. The refinancing should not dictate the long-range plan. The long-range plan should dictate the refinancing and the solutions. Okay? Tab number three, I, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time talking about us. At, at some point, if, if a refinance is completed, this is a bid process, right? No different than, than the ORC lease process. We submit proposals, we submit bids. If proposals and bids do not come back, that provide a district the result that makes sense to proceed with, we shouldn't refinance, okay? We just did the same thing for Lathas Schools last fall. We've got six proposals on refinancing. None of them met our objectives. We rejected all of them. Bid process, we can evaluate it, but if it does not make sense, there's no commitment on behalf of the school district to proceed with that process. If we do proceed with it, I think it's important to, to know that we're obviously very highly qualified to do so. We do more, more of the, more of the bid processes than anybody else in the country has indicated on that, on that page. Something that just wanted to make you aware of. And then statement of qualifications, I won't go through, through much of this. It's, it's in your, it's in your board packet this evening. Obviously, we're very, very active in the state of Kansas, do a lot of bond issues. The very last page of tab number three. Provides you, provides you a list of references and contacts and, and resources. Again, it's, it's, it's critical that, that this process is understanding, developing our long-range plan. I'll touch on one more thing real quickly. I talked about interest rates. Tab number four is a summary of, of bond issues, school bond issues completed recently. Tab number five, which I, I really want to hit on a little bit too, is, and I'm, I'm not going to read 40 pages of, of bond information to you this evening. I talked about interest rates. There are no signs of interest rates going up, okay? And in fact, they may probably go down. The longer, the longer you wait, okay, and rates remain at current levels or similar levels, your savings will be greater, okay? There, there's no economic science, and I wanted to provide you some articles about interest rates and about economic forecasting, because I don't want, I don't want this to be about a transaction. I want this to be about a financial plan. And it's important to understand that, that interest rate market, what it means, what time means, what the savings means, as we continue to evaluate and monitor this on a measured basis. So I want some reading the materials for review. Again, I appreciate your time this evening. Glad to stand for any questions. There's a lot of data, a lot of information. I'm glad we could have an initial conversation, much like Dr. Cobb's and Terry and I had this September and October with respect to long-range planning, and hope we can continue those conversations, develop a plan that works best for the school district.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Avi?
So you know something about our district? And you've just made a statement that the longer we wait, the better off we are. And you don't foresee, and it could change tomorrow, 8 o'clock, I get it, I understand markets. Interest rates currently are projected to be stable, plus or minus a little bit. Do you think this is the time to refinance?
Depends what your objectives are. So I think, I think it goes back to the conversation of what are we trying to accomplish? Is it budgetary flexibility? Is it long-range capital planning? Is it, is it, is it mill levy reduction? Based upon those objectives, probably dictates what the financial, what the refinancing plan looks like, right? So are we refinancing, keeping the bond term the same? Are we refinancing and paying them off sooner? What are the pros and cons of, of all those options? But I would say that, that regardless of what the decision is, I think you need to make those decisions first. And I don't think there's a rush. I don't think there's a critical rush to do anything before we have those conversations about what the long-range plan looks like. And I would take time, because it's a very, very important thing about capital planning, budgetary flexibility, mill levy management. Those are things that last a long time, right? So make, taking time to evaluate those options is critical, and then figuring out how a refinancing fits into what those objectives are.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Dustin, thank you.
Good seeing you. Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to 9.06, Board Reports. It's the first meeting in 2020. I don't know if anyone has anything, but if so, we can certainly share.
I do. I do. Well, in December, we had the site council meeting at the middle school, still, still trying to figure out how to promote that big class and where, where we need to do it. But also went over the KCTC data, which, which was good, as we all know, and made the site council people very happy. Today, I got to go to Dana's first-grade room. Mrs. Bybee has been encouraging me to go see Fountas and Pennell classroom in action, and so I finally did. And had, had, it was great to be back in first grade and have all those little kids reading to me. But I, I, I told Dana, as, as I was leaving today, that I was impressed with how fearless they were about reading. It's, it's a great system. I'm really proud that we, we purchased this for our school district. It's, it's going to make a big difference. And then on Wednesday, I get to pronounce the words at the Sunflower spelling bee. That's it. Thank you.
I had one thing. It's not a, obviously, a meeting or whatever, but I keep in the emails that you guys are sending out, especially the, the high school, when they keep talking about connecting with the parents. And right before Christmas break, the new technology teacher at Lincoln, I think his name is Mr. Upoff, but I could be incorrect, okay? He sent out a postcard. It was quite the whole process of designing. My student told me all about it. And he sent out a postcard, and he had written a compliment about each student. And I don't, I think he has a whole plan laid out for the whole school, but I got it for fifth grade. And I thought that was incredible, because it was obviously about my child. I could tell that it was written about her. It gave us a good talking point. And I just don't think that you can express to the teachers enough how important connecting with the parents is and how far that goes to translate to the student and their performance.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right, well, we're going to move on to policies, contracts, et cetera. Section 10.01, Re- Renaissance National Convention. We need to take some action tonight to approve the OHS Renaissance Group going to fundraise for the national convention.
Right, there are two, two things that we want to put before you tonight. One is that the Renaissance Group can actually leave the border of the state as a school system, which has to be board-approved, go to Anaheim, California for national convention, I believe, July 13th through the 15th. And also that they can start fundraising efforts to, to pay for their expenses there. I think it's important to, to remember where our board has set and some of the things that we're trying to maybe align better to, to that process was that when students have the opportunity to participate in a manner, or in a, in a convention or a national, a national gathering, because they have earned the right through some sort of performance, the board has indicated and the district has indicated that they would pay for those things. When we've chosen to go via for fun or for learning processes, that's not a competitive situation, the fundraising efforts then begin to, to try to make sure that they can get there. So, so the differences between what we've done with some other national conventions, this is not a competition in any way, shape, or form. It is simply a learning opportunity, connection opportunity for our kids, and subsequently they understand the need to fundraise. So any questions about Renaissance? It's a great opportunity for our kids, by the way. Our Renaissance Group is fantastic.
Can we combine both of those into one action?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 6-0 to approve the OHS Renaissance Group to fundraise for the national convention and travel out of state should funds be raised. Move on to section 10.02, Appointing Board Representative, Representative to Each Building.
Okay, so this will be an update to the resolution on July, whatever the date was. We had our first meeting in July regarding appointment of board members to particular buildings as their liaison. Obviously, we have the new member, Melidia, here tonight, and certainly want to welcome her to all of these processes. Melidia's kids go to Lincoln. We've had some conversations with both Melidia as well as with Shanda about Shanda moving over to Sunflower so that Melidia could be the liaison for the, the school in which her, her students attend, which I think would be great and certainly provides a little added excitement about being at those events and wanting to participate. So at this point in time, I think if, if Shanda's okay with making that transition, we had some conversations earlier to make sure, we'll look to any questions or discussion before making a, a motion to, to have that transition.
Any discussion?
Shanda, are you ready to pack your bags?
I'm on board.
You ready to pack your bags?
It's a long, it's a long trip from the north side to the south side.
Okay, because our esteemed member, Shanda, is ready to pack her bags and move to Sunflower, I would make a motion that we do Shanda at Link, Sunflower, and Melidia at Lincoln for the school year 2020.
And approve Resolution 18?
And approve the Resolution 18. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 6-0. That passes 6-0. We are on to appointing a board representative as district hearing officer, which would be Resolution Number 36.
Yep, so this one is a, is a little bit different. And and this hasn't been an appointment that has been differing in our district probably for 10 years. Brian has been the hearing officer within our district for a long time. And if you remember, historically, there was a time when there were a lot of suspensions in our district, and there were a lot of things coming back to the board to be appealed. And there was a, a rather large volume of of examples in which Brian would have to come back and and be a part of that. I've, I felt that it was fair, now that we, we have some different expectations of what happens within our schools, how we utilize suspensions and how they might come back to us, that we at least have some discussions amongst the board about what it is that we feel like our hearing officer should do and be expected to do before we're just making an appointment or asking somebody to step into the the shoes that Brian had. Certainly, we have not seen an appeal to a suspension for a number of years, and I'm probably jinxing us, and the next one is coming our way. But Brian had a great deal of expertise in what that appeal process was. There will be some learning that takes place in terms of how we need to go through the training process for what a hearing would look like. I want to make sure that anybody that steps into that role feels comfortable in doing so and that the board overall feels comfortable in that appointee. So at this point in time, I'll put it open for any discussion that we might need to have about the hearing officer for our district. Thoughts or questions?
Anyone?
What, what amount of time did it take for the hearing officer to perform their duties?
So depending upon the, the situation, nearly every one of those hearings was at least an hour. And ultimately, their job was to come in prior to, get the information from the district about why there was a suspension to begin with, listen to the recording from the suspension as it was, and then understand what the appeal process was and why they were making the appeal. Typically, it was because it didn't feel like the, the decision or the, the, the behavior warranted the decision that was made by the district. So as you went through that process, the next obligation was to go through and make a decision for the district on how that suspension should be handled, whether kids should be allowed to go back to school, whether the suspension should be upheld, and work through the documentation sent to the parents regarding that suspension. And certainly, we would be there to help.
It's not necessarily a meeting with the administrator, it's the parents, the student, it's, is it like that?
Yes, so
It's with everyone.
It, it typically occurs with everyone. So you would start initially by getting the information and and reviewing what has already been done. We would then sit whole group and go through that process again. And it would be basically the same type of hearing that you would have had before in which the district, whichever principal is involved, would present their case as to why the behavior and the suspension were handed down in the manner that they were. Parents and student would have the opportunity to reflect on that and give some reasons as to why they think that's appropriate or inappropriate, and talk about what they would change substantially if they were provided the opportunity to go back. The board member then make sure that we followed all of our policies, that, that the, the way that the handbooks are written, that we didn't overstep our bounds in any of those situations. And the behavior that we were identifying should result in a particular suspension and then ultimately make a determination about either the upholding of the, of the resolution of the district or creating a new recommendation moving forward.
Okay. Well, I think that it really is going to require someone that has just extensive experience and knowledge with our policies. And because of that, I would like to move that we approve Resolution 36 with Susan Ward as the district hearing officer, if she would be willing to serve.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
This has always been a soft spot in my heart, because I want the kids to stay in school, and you know that.
I know, and that's why you're gonna do, you're gonna do great. But again, we haven't had a hearing in quite some time. And hopefully, and we have some great administrators back here that have worked really hard to find ways and alternatives for our students to remain. And hopefully, that continues.
All right, 10.04, Appointing Negotiators.
Yeah, so the, the last one here is, I think, and it is a, a process that that has been misunderstood in terms of what the board's responsibilities are and and the, the processes in which we have to go through. I've spent some time over the course of the last week reviewing our policies and trying to understand exactly what the board's requirements and and working with negotiators is and and what our expectations with a team are. My initial understanding was that we had to have three people on the team because we had to have at least two people at any, at any meeting in order to TA. The only piece of that that is relevant and true is that there is an agreement between the board and the negotiating team, between OEA, that in order to TA on any agreement, we have to have two members of the board represented within the negotiations process. Other than that, there is not a requirement for any number of people being on the negotiating team. So that notion of needing three is not, is not factual. We just simply have to have two at the meeting that have been trained through negotiations and identified as the board and being able to speak on their behalf. The biggest piece of this is, is understanding that when we nominate and elect two people to be the negotiators for our district, or three, or whatever it happens to be, that when they go into that negotiating room, they are speaking for the board. And when we TA, there is an expectation that because they've said, yes, we, we agree and approve of this, that those things will make their way through the board. That is the biggest piece of the process and recognizing that whoever we identify as those negotiators during that time will ultimately be speaking for the board. And that is the process throughout the state, so. Thoughts? Linda's done a great job of of being on the negotiating team. How many years, Linda?
For you or for the whole district combined?
If you, Linda's got to play both, both roles, but as a board member?
Oh, this is my third year, I think.
Yep. It's a very important role. And and really, I don't know that there is board interaction with teachers that has as great an impact on our district as what happens at the negotiations table. It is, they are oftentimes very good conversations and oftentimes very stressful conversations. And and oftentimes, there's some anxiety that exists there. But over the course of the last three or four years, we've had some really great negotiations and ultimately have impacted our district in a very positive manner, and certainly, we would want to continue that.
And I think the thing to remember is that we have worked as a team, the teachers and the board. We have worked as a team on these negotiations. And, and for the most part, it's, it's gone quite smoothly.
I would make a motion that we add Melidia to the negotiating team. And I'm excited to see what you can bring. And then I would leave the next space open to see if we have somebody else who wants to join who's not here tonight. But at least add Melidia to the team. I'd make that motion.
A second? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 6-0.
Awesome, Melidia, welcome to the team.
Thanks.
I would like to propose that we add Shanda Olmsted to the negotiating team, if she would like to serve.
I would second that.
Do you see any conflict there with my standing?
No.
No, none whatsoever.
I mean, think about Brian Kane was a member of that negotiating team for a long time.
No, there's no conflict.
So there's no conflict.
Plus, your, your situation is administrative and not, and not teacher. So, no, there's no conflict at all.
Was there a second to my motion?
Yes.
I heard it over here.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand.
All right.
Passes 6-0.
I'm on board.
Congratulations. Negotiating team is gonna be great. We will start with some processes here pretty quickly. I'll get some information out to everybody about what we're gonna do with negotiations. I actually think we're gonna try to go through negotiations training together, OEA and board at the same time versus how we've done so in the past. So we'll see if we can make all that work. We'll be in touch for sure.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb. Okay, we do not need an executive session for personnel tonight. You do have a personnel report too that has been presented. Is there a motion to approve such report?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 6-0. And we are down to announcements.
Announcements.
9 o'clock, finish this up before it hits 9:01.
Uh, there are not a lot of announcements. We're, welcome back. There, there are a number of things on a, on a calendar to look at, but this is the time of the year when they're, when they're all over the place. So I think that we have basketball coming up on tomorrow. We have basketball tomorrow and Friday at, at OHS. Middle school basketball is now getting underway as well. There's, not only do you have eighth-grade boys, seventh-grade boys going now, but also your, your instructional leagues that are happening now. Wrestling is going great. I think wrestlers have placed in their first three competitions in the top three. They're doing some awesome things there. There's just a lot of really great things happening within the district. But we're still looking at finding a way to develop a district-wide calendar that is much more useful and friendly for everybody to look at so that we don't have to identify what each school is doing, and there's a one-stop shop to to go to get there. New website will be out on January 17th, hopefully. One of the things that will happen in the next board meeting is Mr. Grell will present to us on the new website how it works with Thrill Share and how it will have a better, a better outreach in terms of its connectivity to people. Ooh, that would be great.
Can we give Olivia Sharp a shout-out?
Olivia Sharp.
She got first place in the Martin Luther King S.A.
That's correct.
It's gonna be awarded on Saturday, or Sunday, excuse me.
Good for her.
OMA at 2:00.
Did a great job. Great job.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 6-0. Thank you.